... allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular city council meeting held June 5th, 2017. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held June 5th, 2017. Item C is approve and enter local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for Cleveland County for grading drainage and surfacing of certain streets within the city. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $2,121,514.64.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. We are to review, discuss, and receive citizen input and comments regarding the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget as required by 11 Oklahoma Statute 17-208, 1992. At this time, I'll open it up for public discussion. Nobody? Okay. Then we'll close the...
I have a question.
Sure.
The... The schoolers, like for all the more schools? Do you... Have you guys like heard anything about that? Or is this city or...
No. The school system is completely separate from the city council. And they do their own thing, and we kinda do too. We try to support them all we can, but the school system is about 120 something square miles, and the city of Moore is 28 square miles. So we do... They kinda surround us. But they have a totally different budget and everything else. And yes, they have started putting in the safe rooms in all the schools. Sure. Okay. That being said, we'll close the public hearing. Item number four is recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number four is consider approval of FY 2017-2018 annual budget and adopt resolution number 87917.
Mayor and council, I think we've put forth what is a conservative budget as far as the financial projections, but a proactive budget in that we have to a very large degree identified the projects we will work on in fiscal year 18. Our goal was to address needs in all parts of the city. The total proposed budget is less than the current year's revised budget due to an $8 million reduction in expected disaster recovery spending, $5.8 million in bond issuance and other financing transactions, and $5 million for street and park projects that were part of the budget provision passed last November. This budget anticipates sales tax growth of nearly $1.3 million, or 5%, based on the new businesses that have just opened or are scheduled to open, and collection of online sales tax from Amazon. This budget adds one new position in our sanitation department. This budget does call for a $5 increase in additional polycarts. The revenue from this increase will be dedicated to improving the facilities at our public works location. In order to maintain the level of service to our citizens, we need to upgrade our public works facilities. There is funding for employees to receive merit increases if they're eligible, and we have identified street drainage and sidewalk projects. And these projects, along with the draft budget, will put on our website for public review. Be happy to answer any questions and would move for adoption.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Hey, do we have... So we are doing the emergency mobile or the emergency command post.
Yes, the command post is part of the current year's budget that we're in right now, and they're working on the specs for that, but those funds have been encumbered. And so I expect to see those specs here in the next few days or weeks, and then we will bring it back to council for approval.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
I have a question on the polycar adoption or the $5 increase. When do we expect that to go into effect?
That will go into effect the first full billing cycle in the new fiscal year. So it... A couple of the billing cycles extend from the end of one fiscal year into the next one. So the first full billing cycle, I think it's billing cycle nine is when it'll go fully into effect, which is roughly the first couple of weeks in July.
Anybody else? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the budget.
Second, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider the final plat of Fritz Farm Edition, Section 4, located in the northeast quarter of Section 27 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southwest 19th and west of Telephone Road. Application by Teddy Bear Partners LLC. Jason Fritz, planning commission recommended approval of this item 7 to 1... Or excuse me, 7-0. This is in Ward 3.
Mayor and council, you may recall from last meeting that this was tabled. It is now back on the agenda and ready for your consideration. This property is located south of Southwest 19th Street and west of South Telephone Road. The proposed development consists of approximately one acre, and it is currently Zoned C3. The applicant is proposing a restaurant on this property. The property will be served by an eight-inch fire line and an eight-inch sewer line, both being extended from the northwest corner of the site. Access will be from South Telephone Road. They are proposing one curb cut at the southeast corner of the property that will be utilized as a shared drive with future development to the west and the south. Shared access easement is located on the north side of the site with two driveways proposed to the bigger development. There is no flood plain located on this property. This site does lie within a stormwater recoupment district where off-site detention has been provided in Little River Park. A stormwater recoupment fee will be charged at building permit stage. Staff recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you know what a restaurant they're talking about? Or what is gonna go in there?
Johnny's Tarko Roiler.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you, second. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of resolution number 87817, correcting the resolution number 85517 approving and adopting the City of Moore in... Excuse me. Invision Moore 2040 Comprehensive Plan Update Policies and Future Land Use Plan for the City of Moore.
Mayor and council, this is a housekeeping item. The conference of plan originally passed on May 15th. It was using a resolution number that had already been used. So we need to have its own resolution number, which is what this resolution is doing. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? No, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of ordinance number 856-17, amending Part 5, Chapter 1, Article A, Sections 5-201 through 5-202, by adopting the 2015 International Building Code with updates and establishing commercial foundation construction requirements.
Mayor and council, items number seven through 13 on your agenda are companion items. Every... About every three years, the City of Moore adopts the newest building code. We try to stay three years behind to allow other communities to work out the kinks, so to speak, in the building codes. However, the state has recently adopted a statewide building code where they set the minimum standard for building codes, and all the other municipalities within the state are required to update their codes to at least that standard. The state of Oklahoma has adopted 2015 International Building Codes and the 2014 National Electric Code. So we are required by state law to now upgrade all of our codes to at least that standard. We are able to do some amendments to our codes to... Basically to let it address the certain items that we have in our city that may be different from other cities. I would be happy to go over these individually if you would like, or I can field questions, whichever you prefer. But we are required to at least come up to the 2015 building code. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I guess I'll go ahead.
I was just... How... Talking about building codes, just how is the new building codes for residential, the stricter codes that we had adopted, how's that going? Do you get much input from builders?
It's going very well. I think that all of the regular builders now are fully embracing the code. We don't have as much trouble with the... With them meeting all of the requirements. And in fact, now there has been a bill that went through state that would allow for insurance companies to offer some sort of relief on your insurance bills for meeting that code. So we're thankful for that. But it's been going very well.
Good, thank you.
That was basically the question I had. I was gonna ask if the new building codes are in this first update. I mean, we're adopting the international building code, which ours is much tougher than their standards.
Yes, that is correct. And so in the item number eight, which is the international residential code with updates, or is number 857?
Okay.
That is included as an amendment to that code.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. A second, would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Would anybody like to make a motion? Randy, can we do this? Can we combine eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13? Or do you wanna do them individually?
With our reclassification coming up and getting all of here, I think that's...
Okay.
There's no hitches with them in not understanding what we did.
Okay.
I'd be best to do it individually.
All right. Item number eight is consider approval of ordinance number 85717, amending Part 5, Chapter 1, Article A, Section 5-204 through 5-206, adopting the 2015 International Residential Code with updates and establishing residential foundation construction requirements.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of ordinance number 85817, amending Part 13, Chapter 1, Article A, Section 13-101, Section 13-103, and Section 13-111, adopting the 2015 International Fire Code with updates and adopting appendices of, let's see, BCD of said international fire code?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Matt, would you call for the vote please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of ordinance number 85917, amending Part 5, Chapter 9, Sections 5-901 through 5-902, adopting the 2015 International Fuel and Gas Code with updates.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider approval of ordinance number 860-17, amending Part 5, Chapter 5, Article A, Sections 5-501, 5-504, and Sections 5-507, by adopting the 2015 International Mechanical Code with updates.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. And if anybody wants to know, we get these agendas about week and a half ahead of time. So we have time to go over these things. Before we get here with the city managers, if we have questions. Okay. Item number 12 is consider approval of ordinance number 86117, amending Part 5, Chapter 4, Article A, Sections 5-401, 5-402, and 5-403, adopting the 2014 National Electric Code with an update and deleting permitting exceptions for minor electrical work and homeowner permits.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a second.
Second.
That's all right, thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 13 is consider approval of ordinance number 862-17, amending Part 5, Chapter 3, Article A, Sections 5-301 through 5-302, adopting the 2015 International Plumbing Code with updates.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. Okay, would you call for the vote please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Item carries. We are now done with the housekeeping stuff and back to the normal agenda. Item number 14 is consider approval of one-year extension of public works contract with Silver Star Construction.
Mayor and council, this is basically the same contract where... As the existing contract. The only change is Silver Star bought a new piece of equipment, a milling machine, which will do just twice the amount of work the old one does. So the hourly rate on the new milling machine versus the old milling machine is more expensive. But that is the only change in this contract versus the existing contract we're operating under today. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Will it do concrete?
The milling machine is where we take up an old asphalt street.
Right. Do they... Do they buy them with the diamond bits where they can do the concrete? And put down asphalt on some of those concrete places, like on Eastern?
No, they don't.
We talked about doing that.
They don't have that capability yet.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
Did you have a question, Matt?
Yeah, I was just saying, do they do... They do our... Do their... Do they do our street sweeping? Do we have a street sweeper?
We do have a street sweeper, but they don't do it. Our public works department does that.
Is that just done on as needed, or is there a schedule set up?
We try to run it as much as possible. What it do to the workload is probably average is running about two days a week. And usually complaint-driven, takes priority, go for route schedule. So depending on weather conditions, you know, in a heavy rainy season, it needs to be...
We run 27s through 20 Eastern and 9:35. If you can run it there, it'd be good.
We have... Jason made a motion, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 15 is consider renewal of a contract with the Center for Employment Opportunities in the amount of $120,000 to provide one supervising work crew in the public works and parks.
Mayor and council, this is our existing temporary service crew that we use for the heavier maintenance in our drainage channels and rideaways and some park work. We have been under contract with them for numerous years, and we really get a bigger bang for our buck with this company than any of the previous companies we have used. And I think most of y'all understand that these are... This is partially funded by the Kaiser Foundation, and there's direct supervision on the job site. So I would recommend approval. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Just to comment, I see Mountain Ball throughout our city. You don't wanna edging and just clean up along the right way. They do a great job. If I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, I know this is controversial when we first did it, but it turns out, I think it's a pretty good deal for us. It's a good deal for them, too.
We get much better work than what we ever had with hand services.
Great. With that, would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 16 is consider awarding RFP number 1617-06, Internal Audit for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery to Deloitte in the amount not to exceed $60,750 to be funded through the CDBG-DR program.
Mayor and council, this... The city submitted a request for proposal. The request was for internal audit services to audit our CDBG disaster recovery funds from a financial, programmatic, and federal regulation perspective. The city received five proposals and interviewed five firms. After the review, the committee and staff recommends Deloitte for a year contract with doable options up to five years. With that, also, this is a HUD requirement specific to these disaster recovery funds. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a quick question. Reference CDBG funding, and I know with the new administration, things have kinda changed with that program and funding was... Where is that at?
Yeah, so last week, the administration released the formula allocation for community development block grant entitlement program, non-disaster-related. We... Last year, we received $309,000, and this year, we're receiving $312,000. So we're seeing an increase of $3,000 approximately. And the... What you're referring to will probably be held in this current upcoming September congressional cycle for the actual program itself.
Okay. Thank you.
The fees for the service, do they come out of this CDBG money? Or is that something that the city pays for?
This is funded through the disaster recovery funds.
Do we have a motion yet?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, would you call for a vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item 17 is consider a budget supplement to the Moore Economic Development Authority Budget Fund in the amount of $1,500,000.
Mayor and council, this was an item that was the loan that was taken out several years ago through the Moore Economic Development Authority, and it's been budgeted in the general fund. And our auditor suggested that really it should be in fund through the Moore Economic Development. So all we're doing is taking the budget previously approved by council and transferring it to another fund. Nothing else changes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. The consent docket is item number 18. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held June 5th, 2017. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of this special budget study session held June 5th, 2017. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $641,113.16.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 19 is consider approval of FY 2017-2018 annual budget and adopt resolution number 24117.
Mayor and council, this is the companion audit to the budget that was previously voted on.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? It's a lot of money. If not, would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 20 is consider approval of an agreement with Teladoc Services Incorporated to provide access to doctors telephonically or online 24/7, 365 days a year in the amount of $4.25 per employee per month.
Mayor trustees, Teladoc Services Incorporated provides access to doctors telephonically, as Mayor just said, online or telephonically every day of the year. The Health Benefit Committee has recommended that we utilize this service. We believe that this could reduce the number of actual office visits. And of course, since it's a per employee per month thing, if we could reduce the number of office visits, actual office visits, month thing, if we could reduce the number of office visits, actual office visits, it could potentially save us some money. David Fleet, our health insurance consultant with Gallagher, is here to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. Is this something we plan on reviewing in the next year to make sure that it's working as effectively as we hoped?
Well, I mean, we'll, it's probably like all things, we will monitor it. If we, if it gets approved, we'll, it usually takes two or three years for it to really get implemented fully, to where people are really understanding. And, you know, if we have somebody now that's going to the doctor a lot, it's gonna take a little bit of time for it to really start picking and getting momentum and for people to start using it. So, usually, it's the first year, you're probably not gonna have as much reduction in cost as you will the second, third, or fourth year, but just we'll monitor that as we do all of our different services.
You know, I get, well, we know employees are taking advantage.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be getting, we'll be getting reports of doctor reports.
Yes.
As to, as to how much people actually are using the service.
Is this connected to a hospital group of any kind?
I don't believe there's any-
Like Integris or-
I don't know, not any, any, any-
Who are, who are these doctors that operate a telephone line?
Yes.
I mean, I'd be kinda concerned if I called up a doctor to say, you know, I'm sick, give me a prescription, and he said, okay.
Mayor and Council, David Fleet, these doctors are board-certified physicians that have joined the organization of Teladoc, and they're simply, for lack of better definition, they're on-call, if you will.
Okay.
They'll, they'll be on-call certain days of the week, or at certain hours of the day, to take these particular calls on behalf of the members of the City of More Insurance Plan. But they are board-certified physicians.
Okay, 'cause I know that you can do the same thing through Integris, 'cause they have a billboard out here that says that, you can do that, and it's $40,000 for the doctor fee through Integris. But I know that Integris has qualified doctors. I've never heard of Teladoc before, so.
Well, they're a, they're a national organization that has contracted with physicians all over the country, and, and without doing any, I don't know off the top of my head, but I don't think that the Integris physicians are 24/7, 365. I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah, they are, I've called them.
Okay, good.
Pretty good.
Do the employees have to pay a fee when they call?
The, the program is structured that the members have a zero copayment for those particular calls. The plan, of course, absorbs that, that cost, and that's the incentive and motivation for, for doing that, yes.
So, they can call as many times as they want, like if they don't get one the first time?
Correct. Oh, that is correct, absolutely.
Okay.
It's a little scary.
I make a motion, we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the More Public Works Authority meeting and convene the More Risk Management meeting. Item number twenty-one is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular More Risk Management meeting held June fifth, 2017. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of a special budget study session held June fifth, 2017. Item C, approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $9,044 for CBR claim number 2050000508 to Eugene Marshall, unauthorized payment on the Advailant Tax Rules. Item D is approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $12,435 for CBR claim number 205000437 to Eugene Marshall, unauthorized placement on the Advailant Tax Rule. Item E, approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $11,500 to Michael Patkinson for work, or, excuse me, for WCC number 2013-11982-3, unauthorized placement on the Advailant Tax Rules. Item F, approve payment of a workers' compensation agreed denial settlement in the amount of $5,000 and reinstatement of 80 hours of sick leave to Ernest Lockett for case number CM-2016-06921X and CM-2016-07407A. And item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017 in the amount of $218,106.71. This is a consent docket.
Make a motion, we approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the More Risk Management meeting and convene the More Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item twenty-two, open the roll call, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes, I'm here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here. Item twenty-three, consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular More Economic Development Authority meeting held on May fifteenth, 2017. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special budget study session held June fifth, 2017. Item C, ratify action of the city council regarding a budget supplement to the More Economic Development Authority Fund in the amount of $1,500,000.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Take the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. We'll recess the More Economic Development Authority meeting to reconvene the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty-four is new business site to record reflected all the builders that were here before or still here. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Could anyone like to speak? Okay. Item B is items from the city council, or trustees.
A couple items. After the last city council meeting, I received a phone call about the Old Town hoax, and I'm very thankful that city management, as well as the police, got the word out, because there were a lot of homeowners that were very concerned about that issue. So, that I was just very thankful how quickly it happened and reassured our citizens.
Anybody else?
I was just curious, have we found anything else about the Warren, either the I VAX that-
We haven't, we haven't received any other information yet, no.
About the tax?
Yeah, we're, we haven't, we haven't received anything back yet.
We had a meeting in the Lockhome addition Thursday.
Yes.
Reference just issues that are going on in that neighborhood, and other things that citizens brought up, and it was really well-attended, and it's always, it's always good to go to a meeting when there's people there, usually. And, but that was, it was a good meeting, and I appreciate all of them coming out. And then, on the way to the council meeting tonight, I saw, is it Becky? Yeah, she was on her way up here, and she was, had a wheelchair in the, in the road. And we don't have sidewalks on Main Street. I know kids, people traverse that a lot from Moore High School to Central Elementary, and just, you know, it's, it's a city, it's a commercial street, but it also has a lot of residential use. Be something to, I don't know, maybe through CDBG funds, possibly look at putting sidewalks in all the way through that would be.
Might ask ACOG if they have any monies available for that, too. They used, they used to have for sidewalks.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great idea. We don't have them on Twelster either. And that's, both are heavily used.
Look for some funding for that.
Okay.
And then I've had just a couple, people have asked me what's going on in, over on Nineteenth Street by the, I can't think of the business, but by the taco business.
Del Taco.
Del Taco. There's something being built there. Does anybody know what's being built?
There's two restaurants going in right there.
Do you know what they are?
No, even if I did, I couldn't tell.
Elizabeth, do you know?
I think one's called Pop Bellies.
Okay. That's all it.
Mark Ham adds.
I did have one other note. The lines where we turned into two turn lanes on Telephone and Fourth and heading west, those lines are almost impossible to see when you're at that intersection. I really think that needs to be something that is looked at sooner rather than later, because even knowing they're there, it's impossible to see them.
And it switches right there, too.
Right, it does. And it's a new turn lane, so everyone who's used to been, who's been driving it, you, right, you don't realize it's a turn lane.
I did that the other day.
Picking back on Danielle, I hope that we can get that fixed here pretty quick, 'cause I'm, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's an issue.
And then also, Danielle, do we have any updates on the Thirty-Fourth Street Bridge? I've had a few inquiries about that.
Have y'all had any meetings about the design?
We have our first meeting tomorrow afternoon, so there's no update.
Are they, are y'all considering the photo or the engraving of Adam on that bridge? Is that still being considered?
Not at this time. No, we did have a citizen survey, and we had great feedback. They did the online survey, and we're gonna go about tomorrow. Lots of people threw out ideas, and we're gonna try to narrow it down to maybe one or two different themes and go from there. So, at that time, we'll have a conversation about it.
Okay. Any items from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, a couple of things here. The VAPex system has been installed at Thirty-Fourth and Broadway and is operational, so the odor problems that we have there from time to time should be under control now, and we shouldn't have those issues in the future. I guess we'll know for sure when the weather gets colder, because that's when they tend to surface. The intersection at Broadway and Eastern that we fed some concerns about, the parts to resignalize the intersection have been ordered, and so they should be in before too long, and we'll get that intersection corrected, and so hopefully that'll take care of the concerns there. Just to echo Councilman Ham's comments about the meeting in, in Lockoma the other night, we did have a very productive meeting. It was well, well-attended. The, the room was exceptionally hot, and everyone still managed to maintain their temper and everything else, so that was good. I'd like to thank Elizabeth Whitman and her staff for putting that on and, and coming up with a plan to address the issues in that area. I think that'll be a very positive thing here in the next few weeks. We do, we are in the process of putting together a restriping plan for the streets in the city. I mean, obviously, Fourth and Telephone, that's been discussed here tonight, is, is one of the intersections that need some work, and there's some other areas around the city, too, that we are in the process of developing a maintenance plan for, so, so it's done more consistently.
That's great, good to hear.
So, we are, we are doing that. And then, in keeping with what other municipalities and the state has done over the Christmas holidays, we will be closed on Monday, December 25th, and Tuesday, December 26th. That's all I have.
What about Fourth of July? It's on Tuesday.
And it'll be on Fourth of July, so that's, that's all we'll do.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else have anything? If nothing else. Item twenty-five is gentleman.
So moved.
Alright, thanks. Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.
The reason I don't think-